Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lingo?
Here.
Mrs. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Parsons?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Redding?
Here.
Mrs. Dosa?
Here.
Mr. George?
Here. Okay, everyone's present accounted for. You have the minutes before you from the March 3 meeting, 2020. Has anybody seen any corrections or that we need to make on those? Part of the March 3 was our last meeting.
Did you see anything? Mr. President, on the second page, City Manager's Report. Third paragraph doesn't have an ending.
Doesn't have a period?
Third paragraph doesn't have an ending?
Right. This will be, this will be to help us better understand something. That was about the paramedics versus EMTs or something like that, Bill?
Third paragraph would...
Would like to have the city's medical director.
Yeah. Maybe, I think maybe better understand his role. I think that's what, with the medical director?
Yeah.
We were gonna have him come in, obviously we're not any longer, but would like to have the medical director at our April 7 council meeting. This will be to help us better understand his role as the medical director.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I hope everybody got that? Anything else? Then I would ask for a motion to approve as corrected.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Mr. Redding has made a motion to adopt as amended?
I'll second. Pick one.
Cordell George, Secretary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. What do you have, Bob?
We also have the work session minutes on the back.
Okay, on the back page, we have minutes for the Mount Healthy Work Session, March 3, 2020. Any corrections or that we need to put on this?
Is that good?
Make a motion, I'll ask for a motion to adopt as printed.
I'll make a motion, minutes be approved as printed.
Peterson's made a motion to adopt as printed?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Parsons is seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I have no correspondence to bring forward. Does anybody else have any that they'd like to bring up? Okay, do we have any guests or special events? Okay, public input. I'll turn that over to Bill.
Thanks. We're on about a 30-second delay. So far, I have nobody, I am watching everything here on the live channel, live stream, and nobody has submitted anything. But I thought we might, let's give it a few more minutes just because they're not hearing it, you know, as we're talking, so. Do you want to sing a little song, Rob?
No, I will, I will.
We don't want him to.
Okay, alright, that's right.
Could've brought your banjo.
Your arthritis isn't working too well with a banjo anymore. We are delaying at the moment for the YouTube to catch up. YouTube is the right term?
Yeah, the movies, or the council meeting tonight's being livestreamed on a YouTube channel.
Okay.
I think we've probably given it enough time. Nobody's, nobody's requested any or had any comments or questions, so I think we can move on. I think so.
Alright, then moving on from public input to the committees. Business partnership, Ms. Peterson?
Okay, um, the Business Association hasn't really had a meeting since March. They canceled the March meeting. We kind of canceled the April. We tried to do it by Zoom this past Monday, but we did not have a quorum, so technically, we did not have a meeting. So we're gonna try again for next month. So we didn't really talk too much. I know Betty Bolus was there from Fibonacci, and just kind of for information. They were gonna have like the market starting in May, but of course, we can't do that, so she's looking to have it in June. And then also those ear savers, that plastic piece that goes around behind your ears. She has some that you can come by for medical people, that they will give them to you for free if anybody needs them. If you just go through the drive-through and ask for them. That's pretty much it for that. And then the Alliance, I did get information. For March, they served 404 families. And of course, there, because of the virus, they've changed how they operate. So they're operating the pantry on a skeleton crew. It's only five volunteers that are working there, and they each have certain jobs. And then when the guests, the guests are supposed to remain in the car, and then people, volunteers will take the things out to them. So that's probably gonna be going on for a while. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Peterson? Okay, then we're moving on to beautification. Ms. Moody?
I really don't have any report, but with the no parking uptown, is that for cleaning the streets, Bill?
It is for restoration of the horrible water line that was put in on last year. So yeah, Alita Construction is gonna come in, hopefully tomorrow, starting tomorrow, starting to grind and overlay the trench lines and laterals.
So that'll impact traffic movement as far as they'll have somebody like they do on Compton Road now, I mean, kind of?
Right, yeah, they'll be responsible for the traffic.
Do you think it'll be rerouted off of Hamilton Avenue, or?
I doubt it. Traffic's so light as it is, you know, it's not a bad time to be doing it.
No, not at all.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking of the businesses that are still open. You know, wanna make sure that we still try to go in and do our part to purchase from them.
Sure.
Because they're struggling right now, but they're, you know, they're trying to stay open, the few that can stay open. And I, that's fine, because that'll help improve, obviously, the look of Hamilton Avenue, also with the driving, okay. And as far as any beautification goes, as far as planting or anything, it's too early for that, and I'm not sure where we'll be with that, so we'll have to figure that out.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Finance Committee, Mr. Parsons?
Don't have a real report, but we are gonna have to keep an eye on our revenues over the next several months, maybe the rest of the year. Especially the income tax, earnings tax, because a lot of our residents are not working, not getting paid. And a lot of the businesses are not doing their business, so they won't be paying taxes, so we'll have to keep a very close eye on, on what we spend our money on, because we may not have as much to spend. I'll take a look at it in a couple months, and I know Bill's watching it all the time. But that's the only, all I have to report right now.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parsons. Parks, Ms. Lingo?
I really don't have a report, but I wanted to ask Bill, I guess, all our stuff that we have scheduled, Mike, is it just gonna be up in the air until we know what's going on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna recover it in my, in my report. Kind of, we have, we have a plan on some things, but yeah, yep.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Streets, yes?
I do have a question on finance. When is, how are payroll taxes coming in on the, have we gotten our first quarterly yet, or?
Yeah, actually, the, you know, we're one month in arrears, right? So, so what was collected in December is posted for us in January, right? So our first quarter is technically January, February, or January, January?
December.
December, January, and February, right? So those three, those three months actually were exceeded, you know, the, the original plan that I had put together. So, but that was before everything happened. So we don't, we won't, we'll start to get some insight, you know, when we close out April. But really, that will be just March, and, you know, and really, things didn't really get clamped down in March till the end. So we're probably not gonna get great clarity like Bob was saying on this, probably well into June. And, you know, with the postponement of, of the filings and so forth into June, so it's really gonna shift things back.
Okay. And then the only other question I have is I noticed in the general fund, we have, right now, we're sitting on about $600,000 to the good. Outside of typical operations, do we have anything large that is encumbered under that $600,000? Roadwork that we signed off on or anything like that?
That wouldn't be in the general fund.
Right, that would be under the street levy, but.
No.
Nothing, so not, but that's an, so nothing under the general fund, buying a car or anything like that?
No, a memo went, again, I was gonna cover this in my report, but, but a memo went out last week, and we're gonna talk about this, you know, as some of the things that we need to look at to try to do. But, I mean, basically, if it's, if it's not essential, we've all been becoming familiar with essential and non-essential lately, right? Anything non-essential is not to be purchased and for the foreseeable future. But we're gonna still operate, you know, and, and do the things that we need to do, maintain stuff so that it doesn't break, but if it can be deferred. So yeah, those are some of the things that we're gonna talk about here in a bit.
Okay.
Okay, streets and safety then, Mr. Redding?
Yes, on streets, Bill, I read your, the document in, in the packet for the Ohio Public Works. What I couldn't remember is were, were we part of round 33 for Adams Road, or were we, were we part of round 34?
34.
34, yeah. So that's, so basically, that's suspended, obviously, until work is gonna be done, or until the bill was passed in Columbus.
Well, until, yeah, until the, till the state legislature meets again and passes the budget. So, yeah, it won't, you know, and it's, yeah, I mean, you read the information in there. It's, right now, it's, it's not looking like it, it might be, funds will be available as of July 1st.
Funds will not be available?
And they're usually available by July 1st.
That's when they're released, right? Typically, on a project like that, we would be, we would be currently getting ready to probably go out to bid in May. And we're not gonna do that now with, with the, you know, with, with the things up in the air like they are. The funds, the funds just aren't there.
Okay, and then on safety, the only thing I have is, I mean, I saw neighbors helping neighbors, you know, throughout the storm. I didn't hear of anybody getting hurt from fallen trees, but we certainly had a lot of damage and power outages, the trees down, and so.
We still do have a tree over lines, phone lines on Hickman and Kinney, and our church has called numerous times, and.
Is it over phone lines, or is it?
Yes, over phone lines.
Okay.
And so they can't get a tree person in there to take down the rest of the tree, because half the tree's hanging over there. And I'm telling you, if you walk under there and that falls, they can't get a whole, they're, they keep like requesting, so I don't know, what do you do? You just don't.
But it is the phone lines, not the?
It's the phone lines, but what I'm saying is it's over a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And that's to me, the sidewalk should be blocked off until somebody comes and gets it, because that could fall at any time.
Yep.
And hit somebody, but I don't know, they've called numerous times, so I don't know what you do about that. I guess the city doesn't have any power? We got as much power as you guys do, huh?
I mean, I think, I mean, we've had, we have a great relationship with Duke, and, you know, but that could be Cincinnati Bell, that could be Time Warner. That's, that's, that's the trouble that you get with the, we know on the power, we know it's Duke.
Right, right, right.
Right? That could be Time, or, you know, so that's a lot of times the difficulty in trying to get that worked out. But I can see what we can do to try to.
I just worry, I, you know, we don't have any cones at church, but we, I just, I worry about people walking under there, because that's a, that's a pretty significant piece of tree hanging over.
So the, so the, the tree trimmers are saying they won't touch it?
Well, the tree trimmers haven't gotten back to them yet.
Okay.
So, but I don't know the way it looks, what if they, what if the line comes down while they're trying to take the tree down, I don't know.
I mean, tree trimmers, you know, a reputable tree, tree service is, is gonna be work, they wouldn't probably mess with it if it was power. But I, if it is, if it is phone, a lot of times they'll work out with it. So if they don't hear anything back from the, from the tree trimmer, if they're, once they hear that, then, then let me know, tell them to get ahold of me, and I'll see what I can do to help.
Yeah, because basically, the city can't do anything unless it's in the road, right?
Yeah, I mean, I know what tree you're talking about, that's definitely on private property, yeah.
Right, yeah, it is on private property, but it's hanging over now. Yeah, well, part of it is, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Redding. Schools, Mr. George?
Not much of a report. Students will be finishing out the school year from home. Everybody working in education, making major adjustments to make that happen, and we're still staying tuned for what's in the future. That's all I have.
Does Mount Healthy have any issue with trying to do this online? Does, they have a certain amount of students that, you know, don't have that available to them, or, what are they doing with those kids?
I can answer that. So the district did provide, at first, one Chromebook per family, they made available for pickup. Then, once they had those distributed, they actually expanded that service, so now you can have one for every two kids. So some families have multiple Chromebooks at home now. They also have Wi-Fi hotspots that were available for free internet service during this time, so, yeah.
Super, that's great to hear.
That was taken care of by the district.
Are they still providing free meals?
Yes, yeah, I'll get to that.
Okay, thank you. Library, Ms. Keisha Dosa?
Hello, as everyone is pretty much aware, the library is closed. However, the Mount Healthy Library sent me an email, and they're still having hours available. They can be reached by phone if you have questions, especially with children working from home. They have certain hours that you can reach the staff by phone, you know, Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 9:00, and Friday to Saturday from 9:00 to 6:00, and Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00. And you can also connect with the library through My Library Chat, and that's for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can also set up times with them by emailing to make available for one-on-one appointments, like via chat on phone or video conferences. You just need to email them to get that arranged. But I think that's wonderful that they're still having availability to the community and to people that utilize the library during this time. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, that's good to hear, and that is very nice, like you said. Urban Tree, Ms. Lingo?
No report.
We thrive. Jenny Moody?
We haven't met, but I just wanted to clarify some things that may, people maybe already know or maybe don't know, that Tecun Farm is also receiving things from the Free Store Food Bank, and so they, you can go on the web, you know, as far as who their website, to see when pickup is. Again, Fibonacci got produce perks approved, and they'll have that for the market, but obviously, as we said, stated before, the market won't start, hopefully, it'll start in June. And they've been, with the ear savers, they, they really have been in touch with the community. They've provided some boxes and bags to the Alliance to help them with their distribution. Trinity is still doing the meals in the community from 5:30, 6:30 on Thursday. They are carryout meals, so they're all bagged up, and they're under the guidance of the parish nurse, so they're all done in very cleanly conditions. Also, there's Panera Bread products that are there, that are free for people, and then if they aren't all used there, they're, they go over to Tecun. And they also get vegetable overflow from the Alliance and Tecun, so people can walk in and pick out vegetables. And they have quite an array of vegetables and fruit on Thursday with, along with their meal. I also want to say that we have a couple families in town, and one is Sarah Dank's kids, who have gone around and decorated sidewalks, and they make sure on Thursdays, there's hopeful messages as the people walk into Trinity to pick up their meals, which is really, really nice, and the people really acknowledge, feeling good about what they've seen. And they've gone around and done a lot of, and other families have too, but I just know Sarah's family has with little rocks and with putting messages with chalk on sidewalks. Kate's cupboard is still in operation, they do a once-a-month diaper pickup, and they, we provided face masks for every family this week when they came, that the people at church had made for everyone, they're still making a lot. They've also distributed some to hospitals and also the Episcopal Resource Service Center where our parish work, nurse works with. And I also want to say that the Youth Alliance under Rob has provided boxes of activities and things that him and Shannon have delivered to families that have, have been coming to the Alliance of Youth, the Alliance, and also, they have a fundraiser right now. If you can give, were you gonna say something about that? It, it ends April 30th, so if you get on the Alliance website, they have a funder that will double, they will match donations. So if you give $25, the donor will give 50, and I think it's up to, I'm not sure how many thousand. So it's really important, if you could give even $10 online or whatever, this will really help them tremendously, because once they open back up, they've, they've got a lot of things that they need to provide, and right now, they're trying to provide distantly things for those families. So I think that's about it, because we haven't been able to meet as we've thrived, but a lot of these that I'm talking to you about are partners in our community, so just wanted to note those things.
Can I add something, Jenny? I forgot, but I know that Mary Layman had been providing meals to the community, but she also put out an email and had put on Facebook about needing assistance with delivering meals, if people could do that.
She delivers them all over the county, yeah.
And she was asking for help in getting those meals distributed, or if people can come pick up like vegetables and chop them and bring them back.
Right, exactly.
But if people have the opportunity to help with that, to continue that service, especially now with people in higher need, that would be really appreciated.
Absolutely.
And I forgot to mention that, but yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Moody, the matching donations, that was for the Alliance?
That's for the Alliance, yeah. And if you look on their website, I don't know specifically for the food pantry or the Youth Alliance, but to be real honest with you, it's not that the food pantry doesn't need it, but that's usually where our drive is, and the Youth Alliance really could, so I'm not sure how specific it is, but it is for the Alliance, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, thank you, Jenny. Moving on to the mayor's report, Mr. James Wolf?
Yeah, I am just gonna pick up on that exact topic right now, because I was really happy to take part in about a one-hour Zoom meeting with the leaders of all those groups, Tecun Farm, Trinity, the Alliance, and the Methodist Church. And I was really, really happy with how they were working together. At first, they were all doing their own things, you know, always aware of each other and talking, but through that meeting, they really started to collaborate. I didn't have much to do with the meeting, other than sit there and offer any assistance I could give, but it was very impressive. There was one interaction, especially, I'm thinking of, between Trinity and Tecun, where they arranged the delivery of fresh produce from one place to the other, where a need arose that they didn't realize, so.
And one other thing, just to say real quick, Reverend English from the Methodist Church, Sylvia had called me one night and said that they had had all of the soup and taco meat that they usually do as fundraisers at their church, and she knew it had been in the freezer, so I went over on a Wednesday and picked it all up, because they wanted it to be used, and it was used at the community meal. And then on Easter, we both rang our bells, and Robert's wife is also a minister, so they're involved with distant, distant worship, which is, but we're gonna continue ringing our bell every Sunday as a sign of hope and strength in the community. But yeah, the Methodist Church and Trinity, and then with Tecun, it's all a really good relationship.
And now Grace Emanuel has gotten in on the group as well.
Yes, absolutely, that's been a great partner, yeah.
So there's even more churches getting involved than were involved before. So I'm really happy to see everybody step up, and want to thank everyone for that. The school district with food as well, while we're on the topic of food, they are having food pickups every Monday at each of the elementary schools, at the high school, junior high, here at the Mount Healthy Pool House, and at Overflow Ministries in Seven Hills. And there are different times at each of the places. You can check the Mount Healthy City Schools website or check their Facebook page, but every kid that comes up gets 10 meals to take home. So they get breakfast and lunch for five days for that school week, so it is a great resource out there as well. So amazingly, I, I don't think people should be food insecure at this point. There are a lot of great resources in town, just need to make sure everyone knows about them. The other thing I do want to talk about just briefly, I have had businesses reach out quite a bit, really, more than any other time since I've been mayor. Most of them just kind of checking in, I've been checking in with businesses as well. The restaurants seem to be doing fine, the ones that stayed open. Sounds like Carryout is good, as we all know, Angelo's is pretty much Carryout only anyway. Pit to Plate got pretty creative, they closed their, you know, their dine-in service a year or two ago. They've gone to catering only, and now they have a food truck out front, which has been successful. Goodies is doing fine, I checked in with Tony. So the restaurants are doing fine. It's the small retail shops that are, that are gonna be struggling, that we need to really support once they're back open, which it might be soon, we don't know, we haven't heard yet from the governor. But I do want to just stress that we need to make sure we're supporting them when they do open, because this is really taking a hit. One of the reasons a lot of them have reached out is they've asked if the city has grants to help them, and we don't. I mean, we're having tough, we, we could be in a tough time with our own budget, you know, we're not yet, but we need to be careful. And to be honest with you, we don't have any federal funds coming in yet. I know that's being debated right now in DC, saying that local governments need more funding. So we'll see what happens. We don't have that availability. I have talked, or I have, sorry, I got communication from HCDC with some opportunities for help, small business help, and I made sure I shared that with all those business owners. It wasn't much I could do, but unfortunately, right now, it was the most I could do. Vins' got hit really hard by the tornado, they're gonna do fine. Good thing with Vins' is they've been around long enough that they've paid off their building, and they don't really have much debt, or any debt. So their roof got lifted up and dropped back on, and I called Bill because they had, when this was going on, they weren't able to get a contractor out until like 5 o'clock on Friday, of course, after it. And the guy was ready to work Monday, and they were worried about permitting. So I talked to Bill, and luckily, everything, they were able to go ahead, and you can see streets blocked off, or they do some demo work, et cetera. So they're optimistic, they'll be fine. Other than that, the only other thing I wanted to touch on was the state of emergency, and I'm sure Bill will cover more of this in his report. The part that I want to address is just because I've had a few residents ask, most of the other cities around here have done this already. A lot of them did it a long time ago when the shutdown occurred. We didn't, and I'm willing to take the blame on that if anyone's upset about it. But I want really to understand why we didn't. We don't have a public health department. Hamilton County does, and we contract with Hamilton County. Hamilton County declared a state of emergency, State of Ohio declared a state of emergency, and that's who we fall under for public health. So we were following the state and county guidelines. So I didn't really see it necessary to do a state of emergency. Honestly, I thought it might have sounded like I was just trying to toot my own horn as mayor, show my authority, and I didn't want anybody to think that I was just flexing authority by doing this, if it wasn't necessary. But as Bill and I talked more, and as Bill had a lot of conversations, it, it has become clear that we may need to do this to make sure we're eligible for funding when resources come. And to make sure that we're eligible for some other things, where we can work together with other communities. So at this point, I did declare it on April 14th, so we need an extension of that today, just to make sure we are eligible for resources when they become available. So I just want people to know that the fact that we didn't do this early doesn't mean we missed out on anything. Again, as far as public health goes, and it really, all this stuff, policing, et cetera, we've been following the guidelines of Hamilton County and the State of Ohio. So no ball is dropped, we've been discussing it from day one. We just wanted to make sure that it was necessary before we did it. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor?
Yeah, if you were talking about food, Little Dutch is gonna do a pre-order again this week.
Yes.
So if you want to pick up anything on Saturday, you got a call.
Because I missed it, I, I never know.
Yeah, Mary will be there 10:00 to 2:00 the rest of the week to take orders, and then you can pick them up on Saturday. They're only doing donuts, bread, and coffee cake, and the only coffee cake is the caramel, or, sorry, the beehive coffee cake. They're limiting what they're making available, but, yeah.
Because I called up last Saturday morning when they did it, because I didn't know about it, and we're all out, I'm like, shoot.
Yeah, it is pre-order only. Yeah, it is pre-order only.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the city manager's report, Mr. Bill Coker.
Thank you, Ross. So just to kind of, just to kind of wrap up what the mayor was discussing there on the emergency, a lot of factors involved, and actually, I've been watching it closely. It seems like every community might do a difference, sometimes it comes from council, sometimes it comes from the mayor, sometimes it comes from the manager, you know, just different variations of it. So I worked with our law director to research in our code where we have, because obviously we haven't, it's not something we do very often, right? And it was determined that the mayor does it for a week, and then council extends it, so I'm hoping you guys would just extend it, you know, maybe through the end of the year, so we don't forget about it, you know what I mean? And it really just, like I said, I mean, I was in the same camp with the mayor and talking to FEMA and everything, I kind of pushed back, it's like, there's already a state of emergency in this state, county, why do we keep, you know, almost like an alarm, you know? But we've determined that we don't want to put ourselves in jeopardy, so I think that it just kind of gives a timeline in here and kind of what we're doing, so I don't think it's anything, it's not giving, you know, a lot of the things that they were talking about why you would do something like that is that, one example was, you could avoid the bidding process if you're going to purchase something for $25,000 or more, but that's not something that we're looking to do, right? And then it said it may, you know, impact funding, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't require you to have it, so to be on the safe side, that's why we're going to do it. So maybe under new business tonight, if you guys wouldn't mind extending it, that'd be So just a little bit more follow-up on OPWC, too, is that, you know, we're pretty confident in talking to our city engineer that the funds are available for this round of funding because a lot of the dollars for this comes through the gas tax. So obviously, that's going to start having a big impact because so few people are driving, so that could maybe impact next year, we're keeping our fingers crossed, it's funded for this year. And again, that's just, really what we're waiting on is for the state legislature to come back in a session and pass the budget, and hopefully, they'll do that, and we can get that funding and then get the project going again. A little bit of good news, there's some good news on the traffic light project that we have ongoing, it was bid out, and it was awarded. The estimate that we talked about the last time I think we had a meeting was over $600,000. We had to pay 20% match on that, plus we had to do a, the one signaled intersection at Elizabeth and Compton that wasn't warranted, we decided to pay for that at 100,000, or excuse me, at 100%. And I think the estimate on that was around $33,000 for us to pay that 100 piece of it. So our total cost, we submitted a check after that to the state for $160,000. The actual bid came in at 421,000, so that's good, so 20% of that is 80, right? The 100% cost for the Elizabeth intersection was 18,000, so there's some wins there. So, you know, there's always those situations in a project that unforeseen, and, you know, that we'll have to look at, but hopefully, by the end of this project, we're going to be getting that money back into the state, and we took it out like we discussed last time, half out of CIP, and then half out of the street seminar, so we'll divide it back from there. So that's some good news. Their intention is for that project to move forward, shouldn't be delayed. It will, once it's awarded, we'll have, we will have a pre-construction meeting, and I think, and that's something that they'll have to work out with, but hopefully, that keeps on track, so that's good. The cleanup, our guys have done a great job, as they always do, Greg and his crew, and we, you know, we've adjusted, you guys have seen the communications come out, we've adjusted, but when we had, when they came in during that time, they were able to distance well. Then we got a big boost today from the county, and I don't know if you've seen the cemetery, it was in shambles, it is cleaned up, I mean, they did a great job, there's still some construction debris, we lost the roof on the building over there, I think the city, the roof on this building was damaged, that roof, there was, we lost a couple cameras that we have in the park area, and then the building we own at 7500, which is the barber shop, it was, the windows were broken out there. So all those are falling under one claim for us, and then in the process of being fixed, we're trying to use local, we've asked Bays to look at the roof over there, we've asked Hilltop to do the, look at the glass, so we're trying to help out the small businesses with that as well. So, you know, it's always difficult, Ike was much different, there was federal FEMA funding for Ike, I've talked to FEMA, this, even though it was a lot of tornadoes, it seemed like they added one every day, and they finally added Mount Healthy, the overall damage wasn't enough for FEMA to come in with funding. So our plan is, is to have the county come back in tomorrow, and, you know, our position on this has been, if the tree falls into the street and into the right-of-way, we couldn't do a lot at first because a lot of them were in power lines, so then, a lot of times, obviously, Duke comes in, they clear the path and get the electricity, that's the first party, and it leaves a lot of debris. So, but a lot of the residents have been picked up, but we're going to go back and pick up anything that's remaining in the right-of-ways, for the most part, there's a huge tree on Harrison that's going to create some challenges. But there is that fine line because a lot of people, if it was, if the tree went down on private property, a lot of people have cleaned that up. But we don't really have any funding like we did with Ike for that to continue, and people keep dragging that stuff out. So our direction right now is, is for them to continue to work with their private contractors or whoever they are, having them clean that up to do that, to do that work. So hopefully, there's still a lot of debris on Bernard, I think they went around the city today and identified 10 or 11 more places where it's down and that they're going to pick up, and like I said, thanks to the county, too, because they were a tremendous help. I mean, they knocked, you saw the cemetery, it was a mess, and it's cleaned up, it was great. So that's kind of where we're going with that and our position, we've had some calls, you know, hey, my tree in my backyard, the city's going to pick it up, and we've been telling them that we're not because it was on private property. To kind of parlay into that, we received a lot of calls that the siren at City Hall did not go off during the tornado event, right? That thing goes off every Wednesday, and then when it's supposed to happen, it doesn't work, and it's pretty much been confirmed that that was the case. I didn't hear it. And there are a couple things, they were out today, there might have been a, there was a battery issue that they addressed, they're not completely sure why it should have gone off, obviously. But one of the things that they quickly started talking to me about, and we're going to start trying to share this information, is that the outdoor sirens were put in place to warn people when they're outside during the day, and probably years ago before cell phones and all the other things, right? You know, there's a concern that if at 3:00 in the morning, if that's our only reliable source, a lot of people may not hear that, if they're asleep, their windows are shut, you know, some places, it's obvious, right? Most of the people that were talking to me lived right around City Hall. So they have other suggestions for people to do, as well as, you know, the siren piece of it, so we're going to start sharing the information with folks, there's alarms you can put on your phones and other things.
My alarm went off on my phone, that's what woke me up.
Right, right, right. So, so anyway, I was, that's where that is, it seems, you know, luckily, nobody, there was no injuries, and everybody was okay, but you'd like to see that work when it actually does happen, hopefully, it's another 50 years before we have another event, right?
Bill, that's interesting. And the reason why I say that is, on St. Clair on Wednesday night, we heard it, so we must have heard it coming from North College Hill.
My wife and I heard sirens, too, but, yeah, I think it was a neighbor in one. I know. It is.
I heard a siren come on at 11 o'clock, and I think it was Mount Healthy, but it was a half hour after the tree went through my roof.
Right, there, you know, to my knowledge, the power never went off at City Hall, and that siren is connected to the transformer right in City Hall, so I'm assuming it's on the same grid, I don't know, but there is a battery backup in there, that they replaced those batteries today. So, yeah, I don't know, but like I said, I'm glad nobody was hurt, and we will be sharing with folks other ways, and I guess I kind of agree with that, you know, I think probably the sirens, if you think about it, are pretty archaic, they were put in years ago before cell phones and things like that, when people would be outside and may not know an event's coming, that's kind of what those things, I don't think they're going anywhere, but, so there'll be some other things that we'll be sharing with folks. Okay, and so I saved the best for last, some of the more difficult discussions that I'd like to have tonight, to kind of parlay with Bob, his comments about the finances, and it's really hard right now to get a grasp for where things are going, but obviously, you know, we are, there are going to be impacts, we know there's going to be impacts, you know, on the income tax, we just don't know what yet, you know. You know, we are a bedroom community, which could be helpful, the schools are our largest taxpayer in the city with holdings, those are all helpful, but we really, we really won't know yet. The gas tax, like I said, that'll impact what we're doing in the street and some other things, hopefully, property taxes aren't too impacted, but we'll watch that. But to try to get ahead of this and to look at some of these things that we may want to address, and I have some recommendations we can discuss tonight, but like I mentioned, there was a memo that went out to all the department heads to basically put a freeze on any non-essential items right now, you know, we're not going to order the police cruiser right now for the foreseeable future. What we've done for now in the park is to let the folks know for June that, we're going to almost take it a month by month, probably mid-month, because we also realize, man, when this is, when we get a chance, we're going to get outside, right? We're going to want to be able to do some things, and if we can still have the events, including the Fourth of July, which I have on here, the company, we have a deposit down, they would forward that, if we don't do the event, that'd be good for next year, they're going to get back to us kind of as a drop-dead date with their suppliers of us having to let them know, hey, this is a go or it's not, so we're trying to buy some time. But the difficult one for me, and the one that I want to talk about, and I'm recommending, is that we probably don't open the pool this year. And I know it's tough, but, and you would think that we could wait, but, and first of all, you know, this being the first year with the contractor, it's been, you know, they've been great to work with, we have paid a deposit with them, we paid 10% of our $6,700. They have done work, they have recruited, they've had open, you know, they've had, you know, recruiting, and they have, you know, they have people lined up, ready to go, they were actually supposed to start last week, when they come in, and part of their contract is to power wash the pool, they come in and clean it, then we repair it, and then, you know, but then they got to start buying chemicals now, they've got it, we got to fill up the pool, which is several hundred dollars. It's not one of those things that you can kind of keep, kind of do like we're doing with the other things, kind of wait and see, and it's an opportunity for us to potentially save some dollars, not with the unknown that's coming up, where we're really, besides our residents not being able to enjoy it, you know, these people, we may not even be able to open the pool anyway, we don't know that, right? We don't, we might, we might not, you know, we start to roll the dice now and start spending some money on something we may not even be able to do, so the people that were going to be hired, they may not even be hired anyway. So, I mean, unless there's a, I mean, we can kind of open that up for discussion, I know it's not good, but I mean, I think it's, right now, I mean, like I said, if I, if I let the, I told the company, since they pools, that if they could give me till tonight, we could discuss it at council, and I can let them know on Wednesday, they're, you know, they just said, hey, I just hope you bring us back for next year, and I said, of course, you know, we went through a process, you won it, and then we didn't even get to use you, and you've been great so far, so they wouldn't, you know, they would not try to hold us to the contract, it would be over, and we could do that, so I don't know if anybody has, on that or anything else, I mean, I'm open, you know, but that's kind of our plan that we've laid forward, not buying the police cruiser, you know, not open the pool, and then take the other summer events as we, you know, as we can make the decision.
Bill, have you been contacted by assumption?
No, we haven't, but we've reached out to them on multiple occasions, asking them what the plan is. We're going under the assumption, and you know, what happens when you assume is that it's not going to happen.
It was canceled today.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The festival, I thought they were canceled, right?
Assumption, okay.
Mayor, did you say it was canceled?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just today it was announced.
When would the pool have officially opened? What would have been the first day?
It would have been, you know.
Labor Day weekend?
What's that?
Is it Labor Day weekend?
No, Labor Day.
I mean, Memorial Day, sorry, Memorial Day.
No, it's, you know, for us, it was always about the week, usually it was once the kids got out of school, and that varied so much because so many of those kids were our guards, high school kids, so you know, a lot of the schools, it was kind of that, they, you know, right after, usually that right after Memorial Day weekend, that week in between Memorial and the first day of June.
So if we don't open the pool, you said it's not really, well, that's not true, not really an issue of saving money, because we will save money, but if we pushed it back...
Well, we can, but the problem is, is that we got to start now, filling the pool, buying the chemicals, so that's just more money that we're putting out on something that may not happen anyway. And, yeah, I mean, for me, it is, is a way to say, hey, what if, what if by the end of the year, I got to come up with $100,000 because of our revenues? You know, it's not something I would, it's just, it just seems to make sense to go there on rolling dice. Yeah, if we found out that pools weren't going to open come June, maybe we've only spent $30,000, that's a lot of money, you know, by the time you get the chemicals and you continuing with the hiring process, we, you know, we do all the things that lead up to getting the pool open.
Just my opinion, but I would think we close it first, and then if by chance, we can open it, we probably can scramble and get it open, I would think, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather close them, and then if the opportunity arises and we can open them, then we can open them, but.
Well, those guards that you lost will be looking for other jobs.
Oh, yes, they will, but.
So you won't have any guards.
But this is a company, they got to have more than, I don't know.
I'm sorry, we're having problems, I'm trying to multitask, we've frozen on there, but we're going to press forward, and they're going to make sure that people get the stuff the next day, but tomorrow, they're going to repost this, but it froze up. Man, with Joe, look at that. I'm sorry.
And I'm sitting behind you.
I'm sorry, so I kind of got distracted. So, back to Joe, I mean, you could open it, but I mean, you know, we won't, I mean, if we don't do this, we're not ordering chemicals, they're probably going to stop the process, they're going to stop working on getting the pool open.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm sure if we went to them and said, I mean, hey, let's open this pool July 1st for six weeks, what are you going to charge us? Yes, but I guess, you know, my only other concern is, is that we're not going to know our financial impacts, you know, till beyond that, and, you know, is it something that's worth it? I mean, I think we still try to do the Fourth of July if we can, you know, we wait till long, we still try to do our other events in the park that can be easily canceled, but to me, this one is, as much as, I mean, I'm not, yeah, as much as it is a financial decision, it's, I think it's a, you know, it's not knowing where we're going, it's a pretty big roll of dice, I guess.
No, and that's, that's kind of what I'm saying, close it, and then.
Yeah.
I also think there's a message to our residents is, you know, we have to be, we don't, we have so many unknowns right now, and we're not the only community that has the unknowns, and so if we would spend money hoping and anticipating the pool's going to open and it doesn't, and then we're in a financial bind, and our residents see that we spend all this money for a pool... and then we're in a financial bind, and our residents see that we spent all this money for a pool, it's not responsible, because our first priority is making sure our police department's solvent, making sure we've got the, you know, we've got services, basic services done. And I just, it's a shame we wouldn't have the pool open, you know, and like you said, maybe other activities could be planned, you know, you don't, you, you know, you think outside the box, maybe the Alliance Youth could do something in the park as far as activities and that, but I just don't think it's worse, we, we can't spend the money right now, because we don't, there's too many unknowns.
There's way too many unknowns.
There's too, way too many unknowns.
I was just thinking long-term.
You know, it's one of those things. We haven't even gotten a clear directive whether even why pools can be open.
Right.
Or when Kings Island will ever be open.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't know any of that, so to, for us, that we don't have that extra money to put that money out right now, knowing there's so many unknowns, I just don't think it's a wise move.
I think we should not open it either.
Yeah.
Great, well, I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback, and, and, and we'll continue to, to, to manage our way through it, you know. I mean, I think that, you know, the police department, you know, we, we did adjust the schedules, effective Sunday, we went back to our normal scheduling again. You know, knock on wood, so far, you know, we, we have had some, some confirmed cases, there's good feedback that comes from the county, from the health, health department on locations, so all of our departments know, hey, this is a confirmed location, that they were, you know. And then when they, they've also let us know when they've been cleared, which is, is good as well, so. But luckily, so far, we haven't, you know, our PPE, I was talking to Steve tonight, we're, we're, we are in good shape with that. You know, we're starting to think, like, we, we installed the, you know, whatever you want to call them, the Plexiglas sneeze guards or whatever for the front, front office, so that when we, when we do try to get things back open, you know, that's what I've told all of our employees through this process, is like, we've gotta lead by example, whatever, wherever you think, and try to lead by example, and, and do the right things, and that's what we're trying to do, so.
If I can add to that, I, I talked to Mark Cato, who's the rep for the firefighters' union, just today. He sent me a message, because they're frustrated with some other cities. And he reached out to me to let me know that he was very happy with the fact that we have had PPE, and he, he said that our firefighters have said that they're happy with the way we're handling it, so that was him reaching out to me to express that.
Great, that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coker. Anybody have any questions? Okay, the next person on the agenda is the finance director, and he is not here, so...
He didn't get the invite, we tried to, yeah. Scott's wa, watching, it sounds like we're having some, some feed issues, but we'll keep working at this, you know, especially we got, it's our first run at it, so hopefully next, by our next meeting, we're, we're, we're in better shape.
Yes.
But it's good to see, Jim Lowenberg's commented, Angie Bittner's commented, Ray has commented, so there are a few people out there watching, so...
What you have in your packet, the monthly budget and so forth that he turns in every month, I'm sure the pennies have all matched and counted for, so...
Right, yeah, I think, what's Scott's term, he says the financials are in the, in the packet, and... Yeah, if you have any questions, I answer them, yeah, so that's Scott's report.
Then we're gonna move on, moving on to our ordinances and resolutions. We have one ordinance, and is that really a mute point, that's the assumption?
It, it is now, that it's officially canceled, yeah.
So do we just ignore it?
Table it.
Table it. Okay, ordinance 20-1907, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to establish terms and conditions for the safe presentation of the Church of the Assumption Festival. That festival has been canceled, so we won't need to do anything with that, it has been tabled. We have no second reading on ordinances or resolutions. We have a first reading on resolution number 20-1142. A resolution adopting amended Article 1, 3, and 5, rules and regulations for the Hamilton County Stormwater District.
Mr. Coker?
Right, you know, this is, this is something that we, we've worked with the, with the county on for years. This, this keeps us in compliant with the, with the requirements that come from the EPA and so forth regarding, you know, stormwater and everything. And, and they update this contract on a fairly regular basis, and we really just kind of yield to them as to what, because basically, they're making adjustments as per what the, the EPA or different, different organizations require. So that's, that's really what this is, an update of that contract.
Counsel, questions? Did you get an understanding of what this is about?
This is, this is 1142, right, because we have, we have 1141, too.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that question.
We, we had a... Yeah, okay, this is 1142, okay.
Yeah, we have 1141.
Did I get one out of order?
Do we need to pass this tonight, Mr. Coker?
It would be gr, it would be, it'd be good if, if we could, it, it's been, it was, I think it was in the original packet.
I make a motion to suspend the two reading rule.
My second.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt, second by Ms. Moody.
To suspend the two reading rule.
To suspend the two reading rule. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Linga?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Okay, the re, two reading rule's been suspended by a vote of seven zero.
Make a motion to adopt.
Mr. George has made a motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Linga has seconded.
Mrs. Linga?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven zero, resolution number 20-1142 is adopted. Now, I apologize, go back to resolution 20-1141, mine happened to stick to the back of the other ordinance. A resolution declaring it necessary for levying a tax exceeding 10 mil limitation, certifying 12.9 mils for the fire protection and emergency service levy, questions to the Hamilton County Auditor. Once again, resolution 20-1141. We've been discussing this for quite a while, so questions and comments, counsel?
Does this need to be passed tonight?
This needs to get to the auditor, so we can, at our next meeting, have the levy.
Correct, yes, it does.
So it does need to be passed.
Okay, city needs it passed tonight, so that we can get it down to the county.
Make a motion to suspend the two reading rule.
Mr. George has made a motion to suspend the two reading rule.
I'll second.
Mr. Parsons has seconded.
Mrs. Linga?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven zero, the two reading rule's been suspended. Any other discussion, counsel? And I would ask a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
Ms. Linga has made a motion to adopt, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dosa has seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Linga?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven zero, ordinance, resolution, I'm sorry, number 20-1141 is adopted. Next resolution, 20-1143. A resolution to adopt the proposed contract modifications between the AFSCME, local Mount Healthy part-time firefighters, AFL-CIO, the AFSCME, Ohio, Council 8, AFL-CIO, and the city of Mount Healthy in declaring emergency. Mr. Coker, you want to touch on this?
Yeah, just real quick, and I, I believe we talked about this one, one other, one other time, it was, the, the, believe it or not, you know, we, we just put in the union into the, the, for the fire department, for the part-time employees. I mean, it's already been three years, and the contract has expired, and it expired April 1st. And with everything that's going on, we really didn't want to open up the contract, because there's so many variables, kind of, it was kind of pretty much mutual. We went back and forth a little bit, there were some, some, some things that we couldn't, that they wanted to address, but, but really, what we, we did, what we were able to agree upon was, look, let's just open the contract, extend the duration for a year, and give the employees the same amount of increase that the other employees got, and then we'll revisit this after we see where things are going with the levy and different things like that. So, so that's all that this does, it's, it just opens that section of the contract, and then, once we see where things are going, we'll, we'll revisit this again next year.
Okay. Questions, counsel? What do you need on this tonight?
Need it tonight?
Yeah, that, yeah, that way we won't, that we can get it in place for the, for the pay period.
It's gonna be back pay already, so we might as well go ahead and get it done.
Right, exactly, because it'll go retro back to April 1st.
I'll make a motion to suspend the two reading rule.
And I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion to suspend the two reading rule. Mr. George has seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Linga?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven zero, the two reading rule's been suspended. Resolution 20-1143. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Then I would ask for a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Ms. Peterson has made a motion to adopt, do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Linga has seconded.
Mrs. Linga?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Vote, vote of seven zero, resolution number 20-1143 is, is adopted. That is all the ordinances and resolutions. Bill, do I need to touch on this Ohio Public Works that was in the packet?
No, I, no, I didn't.
Okay. Okay, old business, counsel?
Quick question, Mr. Coker, did, did we apply for the safer grant, or has that been?
We're in the pro, Steve was asking me questions about it the day, I, I believe it was extended with everything that's going on, but we are in the process of, of getting that submitted, yes.
Any other old business, counsel? New business? Yes, Mr. George?
Could I make a motion to extend the mayor's declaration of state emergency?
Absolutely.
Bill, how, how long?
If everybody's comfortable just doing it to the end of the year, that way we don't, we don't forget it or something, and, and I've sort of seen a lot of people do.
Okay, so till December 31st?
So we're declaring a state of emergency until the end of the year?
We can always pull it away, right?
It's gonna be done, are they?
Stop it.
No, if you know something, I'll, I'll...
Might as well.
Well, if we do it to the end of the year, it covers us. It covers us and...
Okay, Mr. George has made a motion.
Yes.
For the duration of 2020.
Made a motion to extend the declaration of the state of emergency till the December 2031, 2020.
Yes, sir.
Anybody like to second that?
I'll second.
Ms. Dosa has seconded. Okay, all those in favor of said motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 You scared me for a second. Opposed. Okay, motion is carried. Any other new business, counsel?
You know, if I may, I'll just add, add, you know, I tried to get thermometers, temperature, tonight, and Amazon lied to me all week and said they were gonna be there on Friday, and they weren't, and then they lied to me again, so it's supposedly coming this week. We've got some ordered, those have been really, really hard, you know, and again, you know, I know some people have masks on at night, and I think as we get to what the normal is, and, and we'll get through it, and if it becomes necessary for, you know, everybody's gonna do that. But I would like to get temperature, you know, thermometers, so that there's that comfort, and that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to do for the employees, you know, that's, I think, in reading what the, the governor's saying is, it's, employees need to be comfortable at, at work, and so do the people need to be comfortable come in. So like I mentioned, we put up the sneeze guard, we'll, we'll, we'll get the, the required PPE for, for employees, we'll get the, the, you know, thermometers, and we'll have those available as we have more meetings, so we can make sure, you know, I think this thing has calmed a little, but it could speak, spike back again, and we want to, we want to be ready, so hopefully we'll have those for the next meeting as well.
Yeah, we don't know that this won't become a yearly event.
Sure.
Like, like the flu.
Yep.
Which is a scary pro, scary thought. Any other new business, counsel? Ms. Moody?
Oh, well, go ahead. Bob, go ahead.
Okay, I recently asked Mr. Coker to look into making a penalty, or assessing a penalty to a residence who we have to cut their grass repeatedly. And he was gonna discuss that with the law director, I don't know, have you done anything on that?
I have not, I'm sorry, I will.
Okay. We, we get too many people that we're cutting them every week. And if we put a penalty, maybe they will go out and find their own grass cutter.
Absolutely.
So, just a, an idea, something to look at.
Okay, Jenny?
I'm glad I deferred to Bob, because that was really important. Mine is, is, is important, but it was, all of a sudden, it dawned on me, did you see that some, I shared it to the We Thrive page, they're gonna turn on the lights in the stadium in recognition of the graduates? I believe it's when, it's a Wednesday, I'm not sure it's this, tomorrow or not, and they ask people to turn on their porch lights.
I thought it was last night, but I don't...
They did it for LaSalle last night.
Some, GCL did it last night, I know.
Corrine did it last night, too.
Okay.
They asked Mount Healthy to do it Wednesday.
I thought Lori Miller was on today.
Yes.
Because I passed it along, because I saw it today, but maybe I'm wrong, because I thought for sure she had said Wednesday night.
It is, it's Wednesday at eight...
Tomorrow?
Eight 20 p.m., because that's 2020 military time. And they ask you to take a picture of it and upload it to a form, I will email it to all of you.
So they want you to put your porch lights on, and...
Leave it, leave them on for 20 minutes and 20 seconds.
Yeah, it's what the other places were doing.
And if you have a red light bulb, put a red one in, and just, and, I don't, anyway, you want to forward that to us on our emails?
Yeah, I'll work on that right now.
Because that's when, so it is tomorrow at 8:20.
Yes, thank you.
I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about that.
I didn't know anything about it.
Well, Sarah put it on there, and I saw it, Sarah caught it before I did, and so then I shared it to the We Thrive page today.
Thank you.
Anybody else from new business, counsel?
One quick question. We will have a meeting next week, same time, same place, same channel?
Yep, hopefully, I mean, you know, it, I've been watching it all night, and I'll, I'll talk to Tim afterwards, there was some, it definitely froze during some of the time, so hopefully we can get that improved, and, and there's a slight chance that soon, the reason why we're here, and I don't know if everybody knows, is that the internet at City Hall was, was not substantial enough. We are, we, Cincinnati Bell has been there on and off for the last few days, and they're, you know, bringing in a direct, a direct line, so we'll have very good internet after that, so as soon as we get that at City Hall, we'll switch back.
Kim, Kim texted me during the meeting and said, it's really cutting out really bad, and Diane called me, and she can't see it too, so...
Tim did post a version of this meeting, will be posted tomorrow at icrcTV.com/unit/mounthealthy, community/mounthealthy. So if people want to get on the ICRC, they can see it in, in, I think the problem was, is that when it would freeze, then it would catch up to where we were, so there's blocks of the pieces that were missing, so. Right now, it looks great.
Anything else, counsel?
Nice.
Ms. Linga has made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. George seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.